Okay, I call the Patent Township Board of Supervisors January 26, 2023 meeting at 5:31 PM to order. Welcome all, especially new Patent Township residents, to the Patent Township community, a place for all. As you are able, please rise and join the board in the pledge of allegiance.
I congratulate the citizens who reside in the United States of America and in the Republic of North Dakota. I wish you a good day and we will be here just for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is additions to the posted agenda. Are there any items or items that the supervisors would like to post to the agenda at this time? Doug, are there any agenda?
Nothing new, but we're going to delay item 7B until February 8th. We don't have all the data we need yet to do that, so we'll just skip over that one when we get there.
Okay, public comments. Residents, taxpayers may address the board on issues of interest to the township. Comments related to a specific agenda item should be deferred until that point in the meeting. If you are attending by Zoom, please use the raised hand feature of the Zoom application and wait for the chair to indicate it is your opportunity to speak. If you are attending in person, please approach the podium and wait for the chair to indicate that it is your opportunity to speak. Public comments received by mail or voicemail, since the last meeting is included in item two. Please be respectful and defer from using any coferenity, derogatory, or any offensive language, abbreviations, or gestures during the meeting. Respect is always given by this board and expect the same in return. Are there any public comments at this time? Your public comments are five minutes per person. Betsy?
I would just like to announce that the internet connection I have here is highly variable, so if my screen blinks, I'll be back as soon as I can.
Thank you, no problem. Okay, next on the agenda is the presentation of public hearing. Proposed amendments to the Patent Township Code. Zoning change in Toth Trees Planned Community for the Toth Trees Resort redevelopment. Welcome, I think this is Leslie Warren, our senior planner, who will introduce this.
Hello, everyone, I'm sorry, I can't join you in person. Back in October of 2022, the State College Friends LLC sent a letter to the board requesting two zoning changes to the Toth Trees Planned Community zoning district. The first was to increase the non-residential building height. The second was to add 50 additional residential units to the total density of Toth Trees. The board forwarded the request to the Patent Township Planning Commission. Staff researched and presented a draft ordinance amendment with examples and a brief history of Toth Trees Planned Community. It was recommended in November in a split vote to forward the draft ordinance amendment to the board. In December of 2022, the board forwarded the zoning amendment to a public hearing. Attached to your agenda packet, you will find four items. The first is the letter from the State College Friends LLC. The second two are comment letters from the Center Region Planning Commission and the Center County Planning Commission. And the fourth item is the, Alex is keeping up here with me. The fourth item is the proposed zoning amendment. So this zoning amendment has two changes. It's to Section 175-23-2, the area bulk open space and parking requirements for the Toth Trees Planned Community. Section B1 Density, the total number of dwelling units in Toth Trees shall not exceed, striking out 4,690 and replacing with 4,740 units. The second change occurs under building height. Section C, adding a line item for non-residential outside of town center, so long as no portion of the building exceeding 50 feet in height is within 150 feet of any property line, setting the building height at 75 feet maximum. As far as I'm aware, I have not heard of any other comments besides the two comment letters in your agenda packet.
Okay. Thank you, Leslie. At this time, I would like to open up a public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from the public at this time?
I have a question. Exactly where is this area that we're talking about?
Can you give your name and?
I'm sorry, Arios Piel.
Okay.
Arios Piel, I live in Woodlands Cluster Homes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. What was your question again, I'm sorry?
The question is, exactly what area are they speaking about in Toth Trees?
Okay.
Their, their plan is to redevelop the Toth Trees Hotel. The existing hotel would be torn down and a new hotel would be built in its place. And they would also want to add 50 residential units on that site, so. Right at the end of what's currently called Country Club Drive.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Township manager?
Yeah, I had received one written comment from Mr. Phil Park, who lives in Toth Trees. He said he wanted to indicate that he favors the proposed amendment.
Okay. Thank you, sir?
Yes, my name's Tony Frakel, I'm with Pentera Engineering, the engineer for the project. And I just wanted to say that we looked at the ordinances proposed and it seems to capture exactly what we were requesting and serves the purpose of, I think we had shown kind of what this is going to look like and really think it'll be a benefit to the Toth Trees community, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm seeing no other public comment. At this point, I would like to close the public hearing. Is there any question from the supervisors at this time?
No, not for me. The planning commission reviewed this thoroughly and recommended, sent it to us for a vote, so I'm in favor of voting.
Okay, can I get a motion to adopt ordinance 2022-625?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Any opposed, any abstention? The ordinance 2022-625 is adopted. Thank you.
Did you all vote? Thank you.
Right?
You did take a vote, okay. Sorry I missed that. Carry on.
All right, Doug.
Still on vacation, I guess.
Okay. Did we move too fast for you, Miss Paul? Thank you, sir.
I'd just like to say again, I say each time, but I have to say it again. Working in Patent Township with the staff and the board and the planning commission is really a real positive to the area and we sure do appreciate it very much.
Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda is public safety. Police update, Police Chief Jolly will present police safety report. Chief?
Thank you very much, good evening, everyone. A copy of the December 2022 public safety report has been included in your materials. You'll see that we conducted 92 traffic stops, wrote 18 citations, wrote 10 parking tickets, and handled 30 criminal arrests. The department notes, we have a 29-year-old male arrested for criminal attempt of theft and possessing an instrument to the crime and also criminal mischief. The male unsuccessfully attempted to remove money from a coin change machine inside a township business. There was a 38-year-old male who was arrested for conspiracy along with the other gentleman. As our investigation revealed that he was the driver and was working in cahoots with the other gentleman, so he got arrested as well. A 20-year-old male was arrested for trespass. The complainant returned home to find a male inside her residence. The male had entered the residence without the occupants' knowledge or permission. And a 41-year-old female was arrested for possession of a controlled substance and possession of drug paraphernalia. Our officers were contacted by Center County Probation. They were out doing a home check on an individual they supervised and found the illegal items. So she was taken into custody for violating her probation. 18 of our 30 arrests were for retail theft and one arrest was made for driving under the influence. Our officers successfully served three warrants of the six that they attempted and they conducted 14 vacation home checks. Our officers did use force during one incident in the month of December. Two of our officers were attempting to place a male under arrest by handcuffing him for a DUI offense. As the officers were attempting to apply the handcuffs, the male began to resist by spinning away from them and pulling his arms away from the officers. The officers took the male to the ground and they rolled him onto the stomach, grabbed his arms and instructed him to stop resisting and to put his hands behind his back. The male did comply then and was handcuffed without any further force that was used. There were no injuries reported by the male or the officers who were involved. Under community relations, Officer McCaslin helped out by providing traffic control. Yearly, the Nittany Valley Half Marathon cuts through Patent Township on Box Hollow to Box Hill, so we always provide a hand with some traffic control out there to make sure we slow down the vehicles for the runners. Officer Bardzel and Officer McCaslin both conducted ride-alongs for township residents. And Officer Tuskovich spoke to the academic literacy classes at Park Forest Middle School about some unsolved crimes in law enforcement in Center County. Two real good community initiatives, we've kind of talked about, a little bit about these in the past, but in December, two big events, outreach that our agency does. So Tuskovich, Officer Schaefer, Officer Carter, Officer Bardzel, and Officer Slade assisted with Heroes and Helpers event held at Target. This is the first year that we've done this one, but we teamed up with the Center County Youth Services Bureau and Target. They, kudos to Target. They approached me last summer and said they had a $2,500 grant that they were looking to use for a program like this. I hooked them up with Christine Bishop from the Center County Youth Services Bureau and it turned out to be a great match. So they brought in some kids who are in the YSB Shelter Independent Living Programs. They each were providing gift cards to go shopping at Target. And some of the officers went down, staff members from YSB. So it turned out to be a really, really nice event. So we hope that there's funding for that in the future and we can continue to do that initiative. But we also did, again, our officers participated in the No Shave November to collect money for the Shop of the Cop that we do every year in December. We've done for the past three years, teamed up with Ferguson Township. So Officer Tuskovich, Officer Slade, and Officer Schaefer and I all participated in the shopping and also the distribution of gifts. And again, a kudos to the Center County Salvation Army, who helped identify some families for us to help out and make their Christmas a little bit brighter. Some training, department activities. Our officers attended tactical response team training. Officer McCaslin and Officer Wolfinger attended training on mastering Pennsylvania search and seizure laws. I was the guest speaker at the Center County Youth Services Bureau board meeting. I attended a training on faith-based security and securing sacred spaces. I attended the Center County Chiefs meeting and also the Center County Children's Advocacy Center Advisory Committee. We did have a performance report for some effort above and beyond. Officer Carter and Officer Bardzel responded to an incident for an unresponsive male. They quickly diagnosed that he was suffering from the advanced stages of an opioid overdose. So they started to provide first aid to that individual and then also administered three doses of naloxone that we carry in our inner cars. After the third dose, the patient became responsive and at that point EMS had arrived on scene and were able to transfer that individual to the hospital for more advanced care. But it was due to the quick actions of Officer Bardzel and Officer Carter that this individual, suffering from a potentially fatal drug overdose, was revived and transported to the hospital. So truly their actions reflect the highest credit on themselves, their training in the Patent Township Police Department. Received a note from family that Officer Slade helped out with a stolen check case, just appreciating her effort on that. The next three pages I won't read to you. I just wanted to comment quickly. We talked about the Centers of the Citizens Police Academy on a few different occasions. Received another letter from one of the participants, just sharing her experiences and some of her reflections that are really important for the board to have that information and for the community or any board members who are interested. Start watching around June or so, we'll be posted for the next one next fall, so. Had a few photographs to share from some of the initiatives we did. Let's see here, the one you have up there right now, we have Officer Tuskovich in the middle. Then we have Officer Rose on the left and then Corporal Louderstetter on the right, Ferguson Township. That is the day that we did the gift distribution for the Shop of the Cop. Okay, looks like we're on it. All right, all right, so that's, that's just a, that's all right. It's a photo of the next one here. All right, here we go, that's Heroes and Helpers at Target, that's okay. So we have Officer Tuskovich, Officer Schaefer, Officer Slade helping out some of the participants, again with the YSB and Target. If you want to go forward there, you've seen that one. One back one came in. Okay, so that's just a photo of Ferguson's meeting room and just again showing the gifts that between Patton and Ferguson Police Department have purchased for kids. All right, now you do want, trying to spill the beef on them. Ah, no, all right. So, kudos to our crossing guards who also were very festive this holiday season. This is two days before the kids went on their break for the Christmas season, the holiday. So to Joe Works, who's out at Grayswoods Elementary, who's dressed up as Santa. And then to Ricky Richards, dressed up as an elf here. So we really appreciate the effort they did. And it was extremely cold as every bear fall is right around Christmas time, so appreciate them going out and going after us, so. And lastly, we have the record list of calls for service for the month of December. Our agency responded to 462 calls for service. That's down a little bit from November, where we handled 534 calls. The most common category is the health and safety EMS assist, we had 61 of those, followed by 50 traffic incidents. So that completes my December report and I'm on deck and if anybody has anything else.
I just have a question, Chief. Do you rotate the location of your Santa gifting?
Yes, so in '21, we had it here. And then in '22 is at Ferguson, so it will come back to Patton this year between the two agencies. We do also provide the option of, we will deliver them to the house if there's a transportation issue or things like that, so. But yeah, we typically bounce back and forth between our two agencies, so.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor McGruder, you guys something?
Yeah, I was about to complain about not being asked to put on that elf suit. And then I, and then I realized it's cold, and so I decided to shut my mouth.
I'll be honest with you, Joe, with the Santa Claus, I was expecting Ricky took me by surprise. I got a photo of that morning, I didn't realize he was going to do that, so. Again, shout out to them, it was super cool.
Yes, well, please, thank, thank them for our board. Chief, you're on next, the 22-year-end report for the police department.
Yep, so obviously every year I like to share just kind of a wrap-up from the year previous. Police department activities, different things that we participate, trainings, things like that. I am not going to read this full 21-page report to you, but I'm just going to touch on some of the highlights here. But our agency, just so everybody's aware, ended 2022 with 20 officers and two police secretaries. We do have a part-time ordinance enforcement officer and we've talked about our two part-time crossing guards. We have three detectives and one of the detectives primarily works on narcotics cases. In 2022, he made arrests for multiple counts of delivery of controlled substances, corrupt organizations, and conspiracy to deliver controlled substances. Mainly, we're talking about heroin, fentanyl, cocaine, methamphetamine, and prescription drugs. But he was involved in two very large-scale drug investigations, which involved the Office of the Attorney General and also the Pennsylvania State Police. Those cases are still in the judicial process, but will likely result in the arrest of about 15 individuals who were distributing those drugs in the Center Region here. During 2022, also in cooperation with the Office of Attorney General and surrounding police departments, they opened up about 20 different drug delivery cases. Again, people trafficking in narcotics in the Center Region. And at the end of 2022, that detective opened up another PA grand jury case on a large organization who's distributing, again, heroin, fentanyl, and crystal methamphetamine into the Center Region. And that case is in, is a joint effort between the Center County Drug Task Force and the Pennsylvania State Police Drug Force. 2022 did mark a closing of that detective's significant PA State Grand Jury case. I've talked to the board about that before. It involved pretty much all law enforcement in Center County. But as a result of that, that case, several people were arrested. And the main source that was dealing heroin and fentanyl, crack cocaine, cocaine and methamphetamine was sentenced to 10 to 30 years incarceration, so that's a really big sentence for all the work that this detective did. Another main source received a two-to-five-year sentence. But these arrests really did put a dent in and stop the pipeline of drugs coming directly from Philadelphia to our community. So we're very happy with the work that he did. And we've talked to others, so I won't belabor it, but also Detective Snyder with the malt case. Did a fantastic job and we got a 10-year sentence on that as well, so. So two big, really big cases besides the day-to-day work that they do. They had a couple of big cases that we worked on in 2022. A great deal of emphasis in our, in our agency continues to be on training. I am very proactive with training. If an officer comes to me and says they're interested in a certain aspect of police work and we find training for them, we will get them to do it. Hopefully we find free training, but we do have a budget, obviously, to make sure that we can cover all the different things that we need to cover as an agency. We have specialized officers who do in-house training, so they'll do AED, CPR, firearms, extensible talon, TASER, things like that. But I did put a list in here as well that just kind of highlights some of the other outside courses that our officers attended as well. Some of the regional activities that we participated in were the Center County Alcohol Task Force, which is our DUI patrols, the Center County Drug Task Force, and the Center County Tactical Response Team. I'm very proud of the Patent Township spearheading really the development of the Center Region Accident Reconstruction Team. It was kind of a need that we identified a few years ago here in Center County. We put together a team that is very well-equipped now and has a lot of training. We have two officers on that team who've received six weeks of training in accident reconstruction. So it's a very intense training. Somebody who really wants to do that work is who we're looking for there. But we partnered again with Patton, Ferguson State College, and the other departments in the region as well, so. Once again, we received grant funding from the state for aggressive driving. We did 14 details, which resulted in 101 contacts and 18 citations being issued. And as I mentioned, we did work with the Center County DUI Task Force. We did 18 driving under the influence details, 165 contacts, 44 citations, arrested five individuals for DUI, and we made one weapons arrest during one of those details. Again, we do carry naloxone, our officers are trained in it. It's the nasal spray that can reverse an opioid drug overdose. We did use that three times in 2022. We are trained every year again by our department's certified instructor for TASER. We did have one TASER deployment during 2022. 2020th Annual Patent Township Police Department Children's Safety Fair was a huge success. We had fantastic We had fantastic weather, great turnout from the business community, who really helps us out and assists us, and a great turnout from the community. Fantastic attendance at the event this year, but really again kudos to the Happy Valley Business Association with their help in planning, scheduling, advertising, and all the support for the day before the fair. We had a meeting yesterday, we're already looking forward to 2023's fair, so we're looking at dates in September, so the 20th is already begun for this year. So looking forward to that because it's a fantastic event. Just as a reminder, we are home to a drug take-back box, it's up in the lobby of our municipal building, so when our building is open, individuals, community members are welcome to bring in any unused or unwanted medications. We collected 280 pounds in 2022, and that was the exact same weight that we collected in 2021, ironically. We did hire one new officer. Officer Adam Wolfinger was hired in January of 2022. And 2022 was also the fourth full year for our officers wearing bodyboard cameras. Continues to be a great, very successful program, helping officers with accuracy in writing reports and also with evidence in prosecuting their criminal cases. Our calls for service did increase from 5,098 in '21 to 5,466 in '22. The most common call for service in '22 was health and safety EMS assist, which amounted for about 724 calls for service. The second most common type of call for service was traffic, which was almost 700 calls. Our accident data, we actually saw an increase in accidents. 2022, we handled 338 accidents, that's up from 200, I'm sorry, 306 in '21. 105 of those were more serious in nature, what we consider a reportable crash, so either there was injuries to one of the occupants or a vehicle had to be towed because of damage to it. So we had 105 serious crashes, which was up from 74 in '21. 18 of the serious crashes were on Waddle Road, and 17 of the serious crashes were on the North African street quarter. We did not happily to report that we did not have any fatal crashes in '22. So just, you know, kind of overall brush statement here, just I'm very proud of our agency. We've had a fantastic year. The officers were really hard in 2022, continue to work hard. Our arrests doubled, mainly a lot of that was retail theft. We saw a lot of theft and deaths rose, so our officers did a fantastic job knowing that there's a lot more workload this year. So just wanted to commend the officers, our support staff, the part-time employees, they all do a fantastic job, but you know, they really are community-oriented, you know, serve the community, so I'm very proud of everything they do. And you know, they do, they serve in a courteous profession and very respectful manner. So the next document I have, if I switch over to, is our annual in-service police training. There is certain training that the Municipal Police Officers Education Training Commission requires us to do. I included '23 in here because we already have that, we're actually in the process of doing that right now, but during 2022, the MOPEP required that we did was legal updates, understanding bias, use of force, and control tactics. The electives that we did in-house here were racial profiling awareness, de-escalation strategies, crisis intervention team update, review of our critical policies, use of force for Taser and baton, and then bloodborne pathogens and infectious disease control. And just for transparency reasons, I have the last nine years of training we've had in our office back to 2014 here, so. The next document I have is our use of force for 2022. Again, our office has seen 5,466 calls for service, and we conducted 1,784 traffic stops. Out of that, we made, again, 327 arrests, which about just under 6% of our calls for service ended up in arrests. So we had 7,250 total contacts with the public, and our officers only used force during 15 of those incidents, which actually is the same number that's in 2021. Types of force that are available to the officers are escort, which is a no pain, just maybe moving somebody to a different location, OC spraying, threat or actual use of the Taser, control compliance, which is leverages, takedowns, and holds, unarmed striking techniques, striking implements, projectile or deadly force. So breaking it down a little bit further by race, of the 15 incidents, 12 involved individuals who were white, two Asian, and one African-American. By gender, 12 were male, three were female. By race and gender, nine were white males, three were white females, two were Asian male, and one was an African-American male. Types of force that was used, of the 15 incidents, 11 were control and compliance, two were pointing a duty weapon at an individual, one was a threat of Taser, and one was a use of Taser. Control and compliance, breaking those out a little bit further, so of those 11, five of those were white males, two were Asian males, three were white female, and one was an African-American male. The threat of Taser and the use of Taser, each were a white male. And pointing the duty weapon, both were white males, and those stem from the conclusion of a vehicle pursuit that our officers were involved in. Added a new slide here this year for de-escalation. So de-escalation tactics were attempted in 14 of the 15 use-of-force incidents. Verbal de-escalation, as one would probably expect, was used in all 14 attempts. Officers considered our de-escalation tactics or their de-escalation tactics to be effective in three of the 14 attempts. But some of the other tactics that they use, they summoned a backup officer eight times, just allowing for more time during the incident, five times, repositioning four times, using less lethal twice, and physical barriers one time. There were two reports by subjects of a minor injury, however, they both refused EMS treatment when offered by officers, but per following our policy, EMS was summoned to evaluate the individual who the Taser was used on. He was evaluated and cared by EMS at the scene, and he refused any further advanced medical care. There were two injuries to officers due to a subject resisting arrest. In both cases, our officers received minor cuts and abrasions on their hands while they were under resistance. And our office did not receive or investigate any complaints related to use of force or any kind of excessive force in 2022. All right, almost there. So the next six pages here are the arrest distribution reports that we submit this information to the state. These are for Part 1 and Part 2 crimes, the state of Pennsylvania tracks that information. So of Part 1 and Part 2 crimes, we'll see we have 292 arrests. 183 of those were male, 109 were female, and it has the offenses listed there as well, so if you wanted to see what your arrested folks were, that information is available there. For race, of the 292, 199 were white, 75 were African-American, and 18 were Asian, and then 10 were Hispanic, and 282 identified as not Hispanic or Latino. And then lastly, the last chart I have is contacts involving our traffic stops or person stops. So again, we had 1,784 traffic stops. About 78% involved individuals who were white, 14% were Asian, and 12% African-American. The citations, we wrote 445 citations, about 54% or so were white, 16% Asian, and 10% black. And then the vehicle warnings, 1,470, 67 of those were individuals who were white, 12 Asian, and 10 African-American. That completes my 2022 report.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any supervisor that has questions for Chief at this time? Nope, seeing none. Thank you for a great report, Chief. All right, moving next on the agenda is Public Works Operations in the spongy, formerly known as Gypsy Moss. Doug, I think this is you.
Yeah, I'm going to take this. So I was before the board in December noting that we had done egg mass surveys for Gypsy Moss, and I was recommending that we spray a total of 1,285 acres, including most of the wooded neighborhoods that are on the south side of I-99 here in Patton Township. We're also going to do some ground-based spot treatments in toff trees in the Village of Penn State for some street trees that can be effectively treated from the ground. As we noted, the most effective treatment is to spray with an insecticide abbreviated as BTK. We try to spray that when the caterpillars are relatively small, and this normally happens in the latter part of May or the early part of June, and it's usually done, it's done with an airplane or helicopter. In December, the board had asked that I go out and talk to or ask the residents of the township to provide input on the use of the BTK insecticide. You can go to page two if you would. Thanks, Alex. I think I just asked a couple of questions if they were residents, and 90-some percent were residents, 97, and then whether they agreed with the use of BTK insecticide or not, and from the poll, we had a yes response of about 85%. There were a few others, and then we provided folks several opportunities to make, ask questions or make comments, I should say. So that was the results of the survey. I did reach out to aerial applicators based in Pennsylvania. I got quotes back from three of them. We had at your place tonight a summary of those quotes. The low bid for the application of .75 gallons per acre of the BTK insecticide was submitted by helicopter applicators at $51.75 per acre. The total cost then for the 1,285 acres would be just under $66,500. As I noted earlier in December, we did have $15,000 budgeted for treatment this year before we knew the extent of what we were looking at, so the rest of that $50,000 will have to come from cash reserves, and Larry will update us on that sometime as we get into, further into the year, get into our... So I believe we have sufficient money to cover that, so.
We'll be able to cover that.
So with that, I ask if the board's got any questions. If we're ready to proceed, I'll talk further with the folks at helicopter applicators and make sure we've got everything in line, and we'll be ready to proceed with the mitigation when the time's appropriate.
Okay, and any supervisor, if it's on supervisor McGee?
Yeah, I just want to clarify on like the bidding process. So when you put these things out, is it like blind, or can they see one another's quotes? Or how does that?
No, they didn't see other people's quotes, they just, I requested they take, provide just their quotes back to me.
Supervisor Trevino.
I just want to remind the residents who have some concerns about this particular type of insecticide, it is, it is very specific to caterpillars. It does not harm birds, people, pets. It consists of spores of a fungus, not a fungus, yeah, a fungus, that, that once ingested by these caterpillars, it grows in their digestive tract of these caterpillars, that consume those leaves that the spray is applied to. So I'm certainly in favor of going ahead with this project. I lived here, when was it, 10 or 15 years ago when we had that?
10, 12 years ago, yeah.
Huge infestation of Gypsy Moss in our area, and those residents who were here at that time, I'm sure all of you remember how horrific that was, not just the defoliation that occurred on the trees, but the disruption of the quality of life because of all the caterpillar droppings on every surface below those trees. So anyway, I would vote to approve continuing or proceeding with this insecticide application.
Okay, Supervisor Whitman, I see your hands up.
Yeah, I'd just like to second a lot of the comments that Dan just made, and one correction, it actually is a bacteria, not a fungus. And I'd like to also further point out to anyone listening, it is found, this BTK psyllis third genus is found naturally in our soil and in our leaf litter. It is, it's not a chemical. We did have some comments that were, expressed specific concern about monarchs. Yes, this pesticide is specific to caterpillars, but the timing of the spraying of BTK is very different, or it actually precedes the timing at which monarch caterpillars are catching out. So the BTK hits the spongy caterpillars when they're, as Doug said, when they're smaller, when they're eating, consuming, and that is May and June, and the monarchs come out at the end of June or early July. Yeah, and I was actually wondering, just out of respect to people who do have concerns, and I recognize that there were several people who said in their comments they couldn't make a judgment, they didn't have many information. There are a couple of very user-friendly documents available, Penn State at least passed some. I found a couple more esoteric ones, but would it be possible to put a link to those on the website?
Yeah, we'll provide, you know, if you have other documents, but the two main ones that I was planning to use, there's what's, the government requires what's called a material safety data sheet, that every, everything that's used in a business has a material safety data sheet. So it lists all the hazards and everything and ranks them, provides all that information. So that'll be available. We'll also make, Department of Conservation, Natural Resources has a fact sheet about the BTK insecticide. Talks about, as Dan and Betsy mentioned, how it actually works, it's the, contains dormant bacterial spores, and it explains exactly how it works within the insecticide. Well, if Penn State has material, we'll link that, so we'll provide all that information. We'll do, prior to, you know, prior at the beginning of May, we'll do some public service announcements, we'll send out notices that we're going to be doing the spraying. Once we get a definite date from the applicator, and it's somewhat weather-dependent, then we'll put out, we'll reach out, we'll put more PSAs out, we'll try and identify timeframes when we'll be doing the spraying, so if people want to leave the neighborhood and stay indoors during those times, then they'll have that information. So we'll try to, we'll get the word out as well as we can, as often as we can as we head into it, but having been through, this is my third infestation, I haven't been through this twice before, this really is the most effective way to do it. By using the .75 gallons per acre, we know we're going to kill more of them. They used to use a half a gallon, but more people are going to the three-quarters a gallon, which is within the regulated use rate, so I think, you know, like I said, it's effective, and as Dan said, if you don't, if we don't do it, it's going to be, it's going to be a big problem going forward, so, for the next year, and we'll have to, if we don't do it this year, we'll definitely be doing it next year, so we're trying to be as proactive as possible.
Yeah. Betsy?
Yeah, thanks, just thanks for that, Doc, detailed response, and the publication, the main publication I was thinking of was the DCNR one, so I don't have any more, any additional ones to add.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you. I also was contacted by a long-term resident here who was in support and said the exact thing that our supervisor Trevino expressed, the devastation of having that. So I would like to proceed, if it's okay with the rest of the board members.
Yeah, we should have a motion and a second and a vote.
Okay.
I move that we approve the spongy moss control measures that are proposed by the township manager.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second, discussion?
I'll second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Aye.
The motion passes. All right. Thank you, Doug, so you know, move to move forward on this. All right. Next on our agenda is engineering, planning and zoning. The Planning Commission report. Planning Commissioner member Sharon Collins will give a report from the Planning Commission activities. Sharon, welcome.
Hey Sharon, you need to unmute.
Okay, okay. There we go. Yeah, our meeting last month was pretty, pretty brief. We just elected our little, you know, our officers and the information, or we had one per, the Works Property subdivision plan was, came up and that was just, one owner has two properties, they're adjacent to each other, and they just want to move the border, like .05 of an acre over. And that's just so that later on, there will not be a shared driveway situation if one or both of the lots get sold. And so we, we, as planning commission, we approved it conditionally and sent it forward to you. And then the other thing that we covered was just information on, about a storage, a storage unit that's going to, that's proposed to go over by the Home Depot area in that little triangle of land between where Home Depot is and between the freeways. And they were just looking at making some changes for parking and for zoning because currently those things can only go in industrial zoning and they would like it to go into a C2. But they were just providing information for us and we were just kind of digesting and asking questions and so no decisions are being made as of yet. So that was pretty much it.
Okay, thank you. Are there any supervisors that have question for Sharon at this time? Seeing none, thank you, Sharon. Next on the agenda is the.
We need to make a motion. Conditionally approve.
Do we have?
Yeah, you need to make a motion on the, on the, the one that we sent forward.
All right. Can I get a motion?
Yeah, I guess I'll make a motion to conditionally approve the plan as recommended by the planning commission.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye, aye?
I need discussion first.
I did say discussion. Second, I said discussion.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Discussion, all right. Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Thank you. Moving on, next on the agenda is the subdivision plan for Works property on Gaynor Road.
What you just did.
Just voted to approve it before the presentation.
Thank you. I'm getting before myself.
Would you like Leslie to proceed with her presentation?
Yes. Thank you. We already voted on it.
Yeah, if you're ready to move forward, that's fine.
Well, that's fine. Sharon, I saved you a presentation. All right, next on the agenda, moving on, is administration. The regional solar power purchase agreement. Larry, our Director of Finance, will provide an update.
Yes, so as you guys may or may not know, we've been involved with this group of 15 entities that are working on a regional solar power purchase agreement. Betsy is our representative on the SPPA working group. This working group's been around now for, I think about four years. We got pushed back during COVID years, so, but we are really starting to move now. I also am my representative on the project management team, which is working on deciding which solar power provider that we will sign an agreement with if we decide to continue on at this point in time. Patent Township or any of the 15 entities have not made a commitment as of yet to, to join the, the purchase power agreement. But I just wanted to give you an update of where we are. You saw an update of where we are on Monday at the general forum, so we'll just talk about a little bit more where we are and what is going to be expected of us within the next month. So back in September, we issued an RFP. We got a response from three SPPA's, you can put it back up. We got a response from three power, solar providers and one, one retail provider. Now, we need to have one of each in order to do this solar program. We need to have, we need to have a solar provider who is actually going to build the solar array and we need to have a retail provider who is going to build us. And we'll talk about that and how that works a little bit in this presentation. So you can move it. So of the three PPAs, solar purchase, we, we have eliminated one and we have kept our, in negotiations with two who maintain sites that are here in the state of Pennsylvania. The other one's sites were outside of Pennsylvania and one of our goals was to build a site as local as we could. If we could get it in center county, great, if we can get it in Pennsylvania, great. We got one retail provider that responded, so we are still negotiating with them because they have a management services addendum and a charge to manage the billing. And we felt that was a little high, so we're negotiating with them to see if we can bring that down. All that negotiation is being handled by this Green Sky Development Group, who is the, is the consultant that we had contracted with. Also, in addition to that, every, there's going to be 15 separate contracts with this, with the solar provider and the retail provider. Each contract's going to be exactly the same, but Patent Township will have its own contract. So the school district on Monday night had approved for a solicitor who specializes in these types of power purchase agreements and that solicitor is doing legal review of those contracts. And once they do that legal review, it will come back to us so that Betsy Dupuis, our solicitor, can take a look at that contract. So that then everybody will be looking at at the same time and hopefully we get 15 different organizations all to agree on one contract. Despite the market price of electricity coming down, because we just signed an agreement for one year, I believe, correct?
Six months.
Six months, okay. Even though those are coming down, the prices that we're seeing for solar power, though I don't want to say what they are in a public meeting because we're still in negotiations, they are a savings over what the market rate is. So where we stand right now to help with the negotiations is we gave them a range of what we thought, how much of our power we were going to put into the SPPA. And I think it was somewhere between 50 and 85%, I think is what we gave them. They want us to narrow that down a little bit in the month of February, so I will be coming back to you at another meeting to make a recommendation of what I think that range should be. But they want us to firm up our commitment, not make a commitment that we're joining the SPPA, but a commitment that if we did join, this is how much of our electricity we would, we would commit to it. Albeit, our electricity is a small, small, less than 2% of the entire project. It's not, whether we go 85%, 50%, 85% or 100%, it's not going to have an effect on the size of the project. Okay, so this is, so just to give you an overview of what this chart says, the way it works, I've learned it's similar to the way that the solar panels on the top of my roof at home work, because I do have those. So the solar array is going to be generating electricity, okay? We're going to be selling that electricity to the grid and then buying from the grid the electricity that we need. And we're going to sell it at a market rate, we're going to buy it back at a fixed rate and there's going to be this settlement, okay? So that settlement, like in the first column, that settlement is the net solar cost and that first column says that we would save, this is based on market rates now and make an estimate, some, that we would have a net savings of $362,000 or credit of $362,000. If you take the total bill amount and you divide it by the 35,772 usage on the top line, that would give you fairly close to what our fixed rate is that we would sign on a PPA, okay? If the market rate goes up higher, you can see because our fixed rate will remain the same, that that, that solar cost, that credit goes up. We're selling it at a higher price than we're buying it, okay? If it goes, if the market price goes down, then we end up buying it at a higher price than we're selling it and it would be an additional cost. So that's where there is a little bit of risk as to, you know, how much do we want to put in the market, how much do we want? Nobody could tell you, of course, 100% what the market's going to do. You know, before the COVID, electricity, we were paying like 4.6, 4.7 cents a kilowatt hour. It's now up to where the one we just signed is like 8.6. And, you know, will it ever go back down to 4.6? I can't answer that. Some of the things that I'm reading online say, no, you're never going to see those numbers again, but there's no guarantee. And this is based on if we did 100% solar, 100%. This is based on if we did 60% solar, you can see that the market in that net cost has a bigger effect on that net, that cost because we're buying more at market and selling less to the market, okay? This graph just show what happens over three years. The blue line on the first graph is 100% of our, our electricity used in solar. The blue line is actually our usage. It stays relatively, goes up and down month to month. The red line is the way solar works. It's the way it works for me at home too, okay? In the summer, days are longer, more sun, you're generating more electricity. In the winter, the days are shorter, the solar panels are covered in snow, you get less generation. So each month, you have this, this settlement that you're doing between the difference between those two. Sometimes it's a benefit, sometimes it's not. The second graph, the second graph is if we did 60%, you could see that, you know, our cost is always above the solar. Obviously, even, even in the months where solar is generating, we're not going to generate enough solar to cover our, our electric usage. Okay, now you can turn it. This graph here shows what's happened, what they expect to happen with the future market prices. The top line, that blue line, that is the, the market prices, okay? The dotted line, the dashed line that drops off after 15 years, that is the solar, that kind of what our solar would be. So our solar would always fall just below, below the market, depending on, it could be higher or lower depending on how much we put into, whether we put 60% in or 100% in. It would always fall in this scenario because they're expecting the future market prices to continue to go up from where they are today, okay? They seem to, to follow inflation. Electricity seems to go up at an inflationary rate. That we should see a savings between the solar purchase power agreement and the future markets. And Betsy, I know you had asked me this, that drop off is because we're looking at a 15-year contract, okay? And it drops off, but we do have the, we're asking for the ability to sign options, to sign extensions to that contract. But this just shows that 15 years, we're done with the, and we go back to market, okay? Okay, so the solar purchase agreement will offer a fixed price for a 15-year term with a 1.5% escalator. So every year, that fixed price will go up 1.5%. Traditionally, what we do is we buy fixed price purchases through our, what we have done in the past, that lasts maybe, you know, one to three years, based on current market conditions, okay? Volume's not covered by the solar purchase power agreement. That means if we only decide we're going to put 75% in, the other 25%, we're going to have to go out to retail supplier.
Just a second, sorry.
Okay, the other, if we did 75%, the other 25%, we would have to go out to retail supplier like we do today and sign an agreement or just buy it off the market, okay? This graph is like really weird, but the bottom, greenish color, doesn't look green one there, but it is greener, that would be the solar that's generated and a little section above that would be the non-solar we, we would have to purchase. The lines going up and down are the hourly differences, okay? Because solar is going to, they're going to, it's going to change by the hour, how much it generates, okay? So as I said before, the solar purchase power agreement is competitive with the future markets. It's going to be at a fixed price. With the net settlement costs, it's going to be within a 5% range plus or minus. The usage covered, not covered by solar generator will be priced at market. And the electric bill will look similar with the exception, it will have this section that settles the, the solar purchase. And like I said, one thing that they're asking for us in the month of February, and I will bring a recommendation once I have, get a little bit more information. The project management team meets twice a month on Monday mornings and Wednesday mornings. So we're constantly getting information. I will bring either something on the 8th or the 22nd, a recommendation of what I think our commitment should be, or a smaller range of what our commitment should be. I think that's the last slide. Okay. Okay. And, so, that's, I just wanted to tell you where we were, give you maybe a little bit more information, allow you to ask more questions than you probably could have in the general forum environment, so I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, is there any supervisor that would have questions at this time? Oh, I'm sorry, Betsy Whitman, supervisor.
Yeah, so first, I just wanna say to Larry, thank you so much for all you've done. Larry named me as the representative of the solar power purchase agreement, but Larry really is the brains and the brawn or the sweat in this. So not only has he, you know, digest all of the financial information, I really, I know you really love this, Larry, so it's not like you need a whole lot of things, you just love this. But you're so good at it, and, but the time that he's put in on the, what's called the working group, has been far and away more than the monthly meetings that the rest of us, peons have, the ones who are the representatives. So, I really wanna give Larry just a huge kudos and thanks for this, and I'm glad you're having so much fun.
Okay, thank you. Any other supervisor?
Yeah, I have thoughts, I don't know how to frame them out, though. So we had given that range, 50 to 85.
Yeah, so when we started, we gave them a range to, for the, for the RFP, to go out with the RFP, we had to go out and say, we're gonna build an array between 8 megawatts and 20 megawatts. But we didn't know what that array was gonna be, so everybody had to give a range of what would be the minimum amount of electricity you would, you would commit to, and what would be the maximum, okay? And at that time, which, at that time, electricity was, I was a little bit worried that the solar price would come out very close or higher than what we were paying, that I didn't wanna put 100% of our electricity in, okay? Solar has become a lot more, a lot more competitive, yeah, exactly. And also, I have a year under my belt of having the advantage of having them on my house at home, and dealing with them at home, a lot more comfortable with how it all works. So, I would come back with, it may still be 50 to 85, or it may be, you know, 60 to 80, or, I will come back with something that's a little bit more concrete, but like I said, our number's not the real, they just wanna, the people we're negotiating with, the two solar providers that we're negotiating with, they want a better idea, because maybe this piece of property, they can only build a 10-megawatt array on it, this piece of property, they could build a 24-megawatt array on it, they wanna, and that's going to affect the price that they charge us. So they wanna know, while we're negotiating, hey, give us a better idea, because 6 to 20 is what we had in the RFP, is a big range. We need something a little bit, a little bit closer.
Yeah, and I was looking at your, the last slide, and it gave two points about, you know, if we, you know, did 50% or something like that, you know, that would allow us to, you know, put the extra funds in.
Yeah, it says, it says there that if the goal to seek lower prices, 50% of usage covered by fixed-price PPA is prudent. I didn't really bring that up in my presentation, because I don't, I'll be honest with you, I don't 100% agree with that, okay? So, if the prices do, something happens in technology that causes electricity generation to drop, okay? And to go, for instance, and this is just, I'm gonna show my age here, I can remember sitting in a meeting in my last company, and our, one of our major expenses was natural gas, okay? And natural gas was over $9 MCF, okay? And everybody was saying, never will it go below that, and it's never gonna go down anymore, it's gonna be here forever. However, then fracking comes out, we find all this natural gas, boom, it's down to $2.30, okay? So, I can't sit here and say that there isn't somebody out there that's gonna come up with some novel way of generating electricity that is going to bring it down to 4 cents a kilowatt hour, and we're paying much more than that, okay? So even at 50%, I'd have 50% paying for this solar plan that I signed 10 years ago, okay? And 50%, I'm buying it, you know, 4 cents a kilowatt hour, and you would say to me, it's 4 cents a kilowatt hour, why don't we buy 100% at 4 cents? Who was, who was the person that made this decision to buy solar, you know? You never know.
Yeah.
So, so is that the prudent way? I don't know. If you believe that solar's, the price that we end up coming, negotiating for is a price that electrics never gonna fall below again, I would say, okay, if you believe that, I would sign 100%.
Yeah, that's why I'm sitting here, and I'm like, it seems like we're starting to, we're gonna be starting to split hairs than not really understanding, being able to accurately sort of like forecast, right?
Right.
And so, for me, you know, as you were going through this presentation, and then I think that last bullet point about, you know, just carbon emissions and stuff like that.
Right, the carbon emission thing is, is we would have to, you know, because we have that goal of carbon emissions. So we would fall into, they would, they would say, our Green Sky, our consultant would say, you should go within the 75 to 100%.
Yeah, and so, you know, I'm sitting here now, thinking, you know, I might be in agreement with just 100%. Again, I can't really forecast into the future, it's not my area of expertise, but, you know, as we're, I'm also thinking about, you know, residents and some of the letters recently we've been getting from people talking about electrifying our buildings and cars and everything else under the sun, and it just seems like we wanna be out in the front of sustainability and stuff like that, and if we don't really see a scenario where, you know, electricity is gonna like crater within the next decade, again, it could happen, but, you know, how likely is it?
Yeah, exactly.
For me, it just makes sense to like, not split hairs and just like go all in, especially if we're only contributing, you say, like 2% to this particular, you know, project, so that's initially what I'm just thinking about.
So, we've had, in our project management team meetings, we've had all those discussions. You know, we've had the discussion about, you know, electric vehicles coming in, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna require more and more electricity as the years go on. And, you know, obviously, the array we built's gonna be, we may be going out in five or seven years and doing a second SPBA for additional electricity. That's possible. The management team has three bean counters on there, me and two other finance directors, and we said to throw monkey wrenches into everything, because we're thinking about cost and risks, and, and so, it's, there's a lot of things, as consultant said yesterday morning, he's never had a group that asks as many questions as this group, so.
I don't think that's a compliment, either. He's like, get it off him.
Thank you.
All right, Betsy.
Yeah, good question. The fact that we only got a bid from one of the retail providers, and I know you said you're gonna, you had some little rundown, we're trying to figure out the management services addendum. So just in terms of what is required of us, under state law, we, if we only do get one bid, we just have to make the best out of it.
That's correct. So we have been negotiating with them, and what the management services addendum is, is it's their fee for doing that settlement on our monthly bill. So, everybody will get charged a fee for just billing us, because they have to do that settlement every month. Now, the question that the bean counters asked was, you know, what's a good price for that? How much should we pay for that service? So, we have been negotiating that, through Green Sky has been negotiating on our behalf. He knows our opinion on it, so he's, he's working very hard. Greg Shive loses, maybe he's very good at it, he's very knowledgeable, he gives us a lot of good advice, I think, so it's been well worth the small amount of money that we contributed to his, to his consultant fee.
I have one more question.
Yes.
And that is, the other entities that are bidding, or that are in the PPA, I believe it's, is it the Borough that has a similar carbon reduction goal to us?
Yeah, actually, the Borough, College Township, the Borough, and Ferguson, I think all have pretty similar goals to ours.
Yeah, I thought ours was a little more stringent, a little.
I think ours is, ours is 100% by 2050, I think.
Yeah, and the Borough is actually a little bit before that, if they can, I think that's that. So I guess the question is, do you find yourself, you know, being, of course, you're sort of directed to be influenced by that goal, and being, doing it wisely, but do you find yourself aligning more with the municipalities, the entities that have that higher goal? What's the general read on the variation in the group?
So, the project management team does not have anybody from the Borough, so.
Oh, right.
So, we, we do span from groups that are, that goal is their number-one concern, okay, their individual goal, all the way to, I only care about price, okay? So we span a whole, you know, I'm kind of juggling the two, but there are people on the project management team that represent one of the 15 that, you know what? It's price, 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 that's all I care about. I don't care about sustainability or the goals, I just care about price. I'm doing this to save money, okay? And there's the other ones, you say, I don't care about the price, I'm doing it to reach goals, and I'm willing to pay a little bit more to reach that goal. So, I'm trying to balance the two.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Larry. We'd like to take a five-minute break. Thank you. We're going back. Welcome back. All right, next on the agenda is Anti-Discrimination Regulations and Regional Human Relations Commission. Doug, I think that's you.
Yep. So just another update. The State College Borough Council did pass their ordinance earlier this month. Ferguson is still looking at it, and I think they're going to take action early in February. I did provide a copy of the ordinance that the Borough passed. If anybody has had a chance to look at that really thoroughly and they have any questions, I'll try to answer them. Betsy Duque is the real expert on this item, and she's not with us, couldn't make it tonight. But my plan for moving forward is bring this back again once more on February 8th. That'll be the final opportunity to get comments and questions. And then if we're ready to move forward, then we would schedule it for final adoption on March 8th. And that puts us just a little bit behind Ferguson Township. So if you have questions, I'll attempt to answer them for you.
Any questions from the supervisors at this time? Okay, seeing none, we look forward to.
Me, I'm a little slow on the draw, sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry, Betsy.
Yeah, no, that's right. Sorry about that. Doug, oh, now I forgot. Oh, the cost of this, we don't have to figure in the cost to pass the ordinance. That's the first question. Does there some steps in the procedure, very detailed, that I'm assuming would have at least some administrative cost? And then the second, did you say anything about a public hearing? Do we have to have a public hearing or an ordinance?
Not for an ordinance of this matter. We'll call it a public hearing, but it's not required. Most of the public hearings that we hold have to do with subdivision land development plans, master plans and things like that that are required by state law. We'll set this up as a public hearing just to make sure people know that they can come and speak if they so wish to. The cost, at this point, we're thinking the administrative costs are going to be maybe in the neighborhood of 1,500 to a couple thousand dollars a year. And then the larger cost would come about, as this is set up, the municipality that's the home to the person filing the complaint, or if it has to be, it occurs with somebody making a complaint about an employer, it'd be where the employer is located. That municipality would be the one who would bear the cost of the investigation. Primarily, you know, the Borough's experience so far has not seen anything large. Remember, one of the main goals of this anti-discrimination in terms of resolving issues is first to try mediation. So before we do an intensive investigation, the first thing would be to bring the parties together and with a third-party facilitator and try to work out some resolution. If that's not doable, then we would go into investigative stage. The other thing that may happen at that point is somebody may wish to go to the state Human Relations Commission and file, depending on the nature of what they're doing. So we're not looking at large costs. Again, an investigation, you know, investigations that the Borough has seen have been in the range of maybe a couple thousand dollars. You'd hire a law firm who's got some experience with investigating and dealing with employment matters or housing matters, whatever the case might be, and have them do the investigation, which is primarily going to involve talking to the parties involved and getting statements from them. So not large costs, some costs, but not large, and something that would can easily work into the budget for next year.
Okay. Betsy, you have anything else? Betsy, do you have anything?
I'm sorry, my computer spazzed out.
No problem.
My computer had a glitch here, sorry.
Any other questions for?
No other questions, thanks, Doug.
All right, thank you, Doug. We look forward to move forward on this. All right, next on the agenda is the Recodification Project. Request number two with board input.
Yes, we went through a few of these issues last, at the last meeting, and I've got five more to go over with the board today. So, and I'm just going to go down what's on the agenda. Most of these have an attachment that provides a little bit more information, not a lot, but in some cases more than others. The first one is in Chapter 142, which is Solar Energy Systems, as I think we adopted five years ago or something. But General Code noted that there's no penalty provision in there. Their recommendation was that we reference the penalty provisions that are in our zoning regulations. That's 175-55. And put a section into this solar energy system where we could do enforcement like we do with any other zoning issue. So staff concurs with that recommendation. We ask the board if they agree with the staff, with code and staff's recommendation.
What's the board's pleasure?
Agreed.
Agreed. All right, moving on.
A big yes on that one. The next one has to do with real estate transfer tax. When anybody sells a property in the state of Pennsylvania, they pay real estate transfer tax. Part of it goes to state, part of it goes to school district, part of it comes to the local municipality. General Code reviewed our language and notes at it. Does not agree with what the current state law is. So they have recommended that we make changes to bring our local regulations in line with the tax reform code of 1971. So with that, staff does concur with the recommendation. I did talk with Larry about these two things. And we ask the board if they can agree with staff and General Code's recommendation.
What's the board's pleasure?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Next.
Thank you. The next issue has to do with a tax that used to be assessed in Patton Township. It was called the Occupation Assessment Tax. And I won't go into any details about what it really involved. But I did go back and do some research. General Code asked if this article can be repealed because we no longer collect this tax. I wanted to go make, so I went back into the records and looked at minutes and things. In essence, the county abolished the tax by setting all job title assessment values to zero in 1999. The township, there were a discussion at a board meeting, the township kept the regulations in place in 1999, 2000, so they had the ability to collect delinquent taxes from prior years. Again, we haven't, this tax has not been assessed since 1998. There's no reason to keep it on the books, and we, General Code and staff recommend that we repeal this article.
Did we get all the delinquent taxes?
As far as I know, yeah.
Someone needs to look into that. I agree with.
This was one of those taxes that was sometimes called a nuisance tax.
What's the board's pleasure?
Agreed.
Agreed. All right, next.
Thank you. This next one is slightly more involved and did take a little more research on my part. And I had seen this, it's called Recreation Vehicles. And it's kind of an oddly-written regulation. And I've talked to Chief Jolly about it a couple of times. What I did find, and it's a real short story, is in 1978, the Board of Supervisor had received an unusual number of complaints about underage riders who were operating dirt bikes and motorcycles in the park forest. And remember, in 1978, there was probably maybe a half or two-thirds of park forest there from what we know today. So a lot of places where the newer homes are was woods and stuff, and there were trails, and evidently there was a problem with these underage riders. And they passed these regulations. And there's one really odd issue in this. It says you can't ride a motorcycle or dirt bike within 1,500 feet of anybody's house and you haven't got their permission from. Well, to get 1,500 feet away from anybody's house in the whole of Patton Township, I can't remember. I calculated, you had to have at least like 200 acres. You know, 1,500 feet in any direction. So somebody asked me about that once, and I said, I can't, I can't believe any magisterial judge would enforce that. If we tried to cite somebody for that, I can't believe that. If somebody was on their own property, riding a motorcycle, and somebody, we wanted to cite them because they were in 1,500 feet, I can't believe any magisterial judge would uphold that. So we've never, I talked to Chief, and between the two of us, we've each been here over 20 years, and we've never used this regulation. And going back and reading some of the minutes as they were talking about passing this, there was even comments, well, I'm not sure we can enforce this, but we want to make sure everybody knows we don't approve of all this riding around. And then evidently, within two or three years, the problem corrected itself. So I don't, you know. The recommendation from staff, General Code asked, you know, does this chapter continue to reflect current township practice? The answer from staff is no. And the best advice that the manager, I, and Chief Jolly can give you is that we should just repeal this. Police have other tools that they can use if people are creating problems between of this sort. So we don't see any need. It's never been cited that we can recall, and we don't see a need to keep this one on the books. So our recommendation is to repeal this.
Okay, what's the board's pleasure?
Yeah, I agree to repeal. Do we need to do something special?
Pardon?
Do we need to do anything special to repeal it?
When we get to the final step of this, there'll be one big ordinance, one big ordinance that says we're adopting this new code, and this will be one of the changes. So today is just a preliminary decision. It's not a final decision. When we do the final code adoption, that's when it will go away.
All right, next on the agenda.
One more, and then we can move forward. So this has to do with zoning hearing board. This is kind of a fairly technical one. It has to do with the difference in language between what we have in our local regulations and what the current language is in the municipality's planning code. That changed at some point, providing some different opportunities for the township in terms of subsequent hearing or hearings, and how those are, how people are provided notice of those things. So General Code has recommended that we revise our regulations to make them, put them in line with the municipality's planning code. Staff agrees with that recommendation. And we ask the board if they agree with the staff recommendation.
What's the board's pleasure?
Agreed.
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 Okay, well, thank you. That concludes our fun for this evening. I will be back at the next meeting with more. Can't tell you, they'll be more exciting or interesting, but they do need the board's review. Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is authorities, boards, and commissions. The ABC Commission's recommendation. Doug?
The ABC Committee has recommended two people to fill vacancies on the Recreation Advisory Committee. One is Ms. Cindy Solak, and the other is Mr. Jeffrey Zapletaw. Pretty sure I got that right.
Yes, you did.
So I asked the board to consider action to approve those appointments.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Doug, your own again.
Three items, appointments to the Center Regional Planning Commission. We do those every year at this time. And management last name, and December vouchery court.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Consent agenda.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Consent agenda passes. Next on the agenda is management report. Doug?
Just a few items to go over. There's development update from the zoning officer. Respond to any questions if you have them. Also had a request from CNET or Township to sponsor two Spring Creek Watershed Commission meetings for the upcoming year. I did email approval to that to Cindy Hahn earlier this year. In terms of announcements, we had the fourth quarter 2022 single-family housing starts. Were held steady for, more or less, for the last three quarters. Not really seeing any change yet from the rise in interest rates, but I suspect that will come about here in the next quarter or two. Also, just on the other side of that, Item B2 there, went back through a quick review of new construction value. And we had probably the highest year I think I've seen in a long, long time, $132 million in new construction. That started, so that includes Penn Highlands Micro Hospital. And I think there's, I think the Mount Nittany Medical Center just squeezed in there in December. And I can't remember, there were a couple other things. But as I noted, 88% of that $132 million is commercial property. The rest is residential. But remember, that $132 million, that's market value today for tax purposes. It gets rolled back to what's called the 1994 market values. What's the common level ratio right now? About 20%, something like that? So, you know, it'd be nice if we could tax, you know, if we got to tax the whole $32 million, but it's about a fifth of that that tax gets applied to. But that's still a very good increase for Patton Township. And then if we look at the Toth Trees Resort coming online, going to construction this year, you know, they told us that was another $50 to $60 million. So once all those get fully into paying property taxes, the township should be in fairly good shape for the next few years going forward. Township events, Township Office will be closed February 20th, April 7th, and May 29th. Volunteer Appreciation Dinner is February 3rd. We have 75, maybe a few more people coming. So it's a good-sized crowd this year. I shared the program with you all. I've been working on that today, firmed up some of the other parts of it. So I'll get another version of that out to you tomorrow or Monday. Let's see, April 23, 26 is PSATs, and the next election is May 16th. And that's the end of my report.
Okay, thank you, Doug. Next on the agenda is committee reports. Is there any supervisor that would like to add to their committee report at this time? I'm booking around.
I would like to make a statement on my Committee of Public Safety. We addressed at Public Safety, the Patton Township sinkhole displaced residents. What I would like to reiterate that I spoke to at the COD General Forum. We were informed to talk to our constituents for them to review their insurance, their housing insurance policy. The sinkhole was an educational piece for all our officials, especially our board. And one of the things that our displaced residents are running into is that their policy did not have sinkhole coverage on it. So as you review your housing policies, please check with your insurance agent. There are three riders you should be looking to have. The first one is ground subsidence or sinkhole coverage. The second is earthquake. The third is flood coverage. These are riders that a lot of our residents do not have on their policies. They have not been told about. And they need to ask questions to their insurance agents on this. To our residents who are displaced from the Patton Township sinkhole, our board is working to help. You know, we don't have the finances, but we're asking anyone with comments or assistance to please help the displaced residents. It's been a true education for all of us of what it is entailed. Once there is a sinkhole, we're looking to be prepared, a preparedness formula next time. Our residents are still displaced from Christmas to now. It's over a month and a half. I want to thank the Red Cross, who was on the scene, but only was allowed to give the residents $500 per person. The $500 only took care of three days. Now, they're out of, the residents have been displaced for over a month. We, as officials, agencies have to work together to come and formulate something to help in these types of disasters that displace our residents for more than three days. So, as we move forward and as we look for suggestions, help from the churches, I've got suggestions from churches, from nonprofits, inform our officials. We are looking to continue to send out information to those who are displaced. Our thoughts and prayers are with them. From our Patton Township Board, staff, we continue to pray for answers and help that will come your way soon. Thank you. Moving next. Next on the agenda is other businesses. Is there any other business, Doug, or any of the supervisors would like? Seeing none, next on the agenda is to adjourn. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Can I get a second? Hello?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. And this meeting is now adjourned.
Let the record reflect that I said nay.